We do have, we do have a forum and a call meeting to order at six thirty. This is the Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities Meeting on Monday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, and it's six thirty. And I'll take order, approval of the agenda. Can I have a number please to move the agenda? Second?
Second.
Councilor Delvaux and move by you, Councilor Hunter. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's Gary. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof?
None here.
And what we? Hearing none, thank you. Business arising from Committee of the Whole minutes, if any, and in your package that is on pages one to seven.
There were a couple of follow-through items, Mr. Chairman, and see there are covered in different places in the agenda.
Okay. Any other, any other? I just have a question regarding the ATMs at the arenas. I was there on Saturday at the Cardinal Arena, but I didn't pay any attention. Are the ATMs in service now?
They've been in, it was installed at the Ingridiums Arena. It'll be installed in September.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask another question about the MTO calls update, the delegation that we made in Toronto at the Roma Conference, but I have the sheet that was just handed to me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. And that's all the questions that I have. No other questions? Thank you. Okay. We have a delegation and presentation tonight from Mike LaRose regarding the Fort Town Night Run, and I did comment to Mike that he sent us a very extensive package to study, and it was actually very nice. Mike, it's all yours.
All right, thank you very much. I'm looking right now at the motion that you have in front of you. There is a change due to COVID- nineteen. We've been actually having to work with the Health Unit, Please and Grandville, and Town of Prescott, United County, Please and Grandville, and we had an emergency session with the trustees last, on Sunday evening, and it's been decided that for the safety of public, our participants, our vendors, our volunteers, we're moving it from May second to September twenty-sixth. Everything will stay the same. The only difference is it's changing from May second to September twenty-sixth. The only person left to actually okay this will be Fort Wellington. They're not saying no, they're just looking in their books to make sure that there's nothing interfering that day, because it's still in their open season. They close usually on Thanksgiving weekend, but there shouldn't be anything on that date. They've never had anything historically, you know, they've never had like a fourth day of some sort with events or anything like that on September twenty-sixth, so we should be actually okay with the four. The Town of Prescott are currently deliberating on this matter, and I was told it would likely carry forward to September twenty-sixth. OPP actually have been informed, and we've made all the changes this morning. The Prescott Fire Department, which helps us out usually with just the staging of the fire truck at the end, which is kind of cool for the runners to kind of come over, and there's the fire truck. Unfortunately, they're that weekend on a training, and so we might actually ask your fire department if they want to actually put down their fire truck actually at our event, but that will be later on, I guess. But everything is the same. Well, I'd say the same. This is different compared to last year. Last year, we only had a ten K. This year, we have a fifteen K. And so in meeting with Robert over at the Port of Johnstown, he was very excited about the proposition of having fifteen K. So the idea would be if you look at your maps on page, I think it's twenty-nine, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, you can see how the ten K kind of comes down County Road Two, which of course will be once again controlled. The, the traffic will be controlled on the northbound by the OPP. On the southbound, our runners will be running. So basically, they divide the north in two. Cocoa paving puts the cones down, and basically our runners are protected, but the traffic's also protected on the north side. They turn onto Windmill Road, and once on Windmill Road, they usually pass about on the windmill, and about something like five hundred meters down, they usually would turn around, and that would be the ten K. In the idea of the fifteen K is that they'll continue. So if you go on to page twenty-nine, they continue and they go down into the Port of Johnstown. And this was actually designed by Robert himself. He seems to know the port very well, and so it was a lot of fun actually jumping in the truck and having him just lead the way as to what it's going to look like. If there's any modifications, Robert is the one that's in charge of making them onto Port of Johnstown, which I totally respect. He has a lot of expertise, has exactly all the meters and how many, how many meters are on the port and everything, so he knows exactly how to keep it at the five K, and it's pretty cool. We've taken all these safety precautions. Of course, you have all our safety protocols. They actually go for the whole course. So we will have volunteers, actually, if you continue on to page, yes, page thirty-two and page thirty-one. Page thirty-one are our volunteers, where they are positioned on our route, especially on Windmill Road, and then on page thirty-two, you have exactly where the volunteers are all over the Port of Johnstown. My understanding is that the, this year, we actually have the girl guides that will be actually doing it. So all the parents and all the girl guides will be actually helping us out, which is really cool, because then it's one big team helping out with all the volunteer in that way, in that space. The fifteen K will start at eight P M., which means that they will actually hit Windmill Road within, the best runners will hit it within probably about eight minutes. Your slowest runner will probably hit it within fourteen minutes. It will actually then continue down Windmill Road. By the time they come back, we estimate the slowest runner will actually be finished with Windmill Road by nine fifteen, and that would be the slowest. And that's because I'm the slowest, and I'm behind. If I can do it in that time frame, anybody can. The beauty of this, the way that we've discussed it, me and Robert, is that at the water table at Port of Johnstown, the medical team for St. John Ambulance, they'll have two bicycles, and they become our green team. They will literally follow the last person as they go off, so they sweep and make sure that no one has any medical issues. And so in that sense, from the Port of Johnstown right down to the Mill Road, we have a medical team that's going to continue helping out at any time. And when we looked at Please and Grandville Ambulance and St. John Ambulance, we can get anywhere on the, on the course within two minutes notification to our command base. That's what was calculated last year. And there you go. All residents on Windmill Road will receive a letter, which of course I believe you all have in front of you, and it gives information about the course, it gives information about the run, but also about how to actually participate, because we want to encourage, of course. These, all those letters will be actually provided door-to-door on the last week of August, because if it's September twenty-sixth, a month before, we want to make sure every resident knows about it. We're well aware that a lot of residents on that road are, there's some cottages, so a little bit of cottage line, so they'll most likely be there, which is nice, because usually the month of May, when we go in April, nobody's really there, so to have everybody there, and they'll be able to participate, that's going to be really cool. And that, yeah, if there's any questions or any comments or any concerns, definitely anybody and everybody can actually contact us, and we'll definitely be answering all questions. We want to make sure that the residents are happy and they can participate, but they also know that they can also leave their property and that there is a way to do so, because there's volunteers on that road to make sure that cars will be able to continue having, you know, to travel on the road, we'll only guide them to make sure that it doesn't actually interfere with the rates per se, for everybody's safety.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mike. Your resolution is coming up tonight under seven A., which is, I believe, one, two, three, four topics from now, so if you'd like to stay around, we can answer any questions when we get to the actual resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mike. We're going to move on now to the discussion items, and the first one is the arena contributions and in your package at pages eight and nine. Who is going to speak to this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we had asked to have these brought forward, just to clarify in our minds the, the, what we thought were the agreement relationships, but I think we have, and so we have the two resolutions. One dated November the first from the Township of Augusta, and the other one dated November the sixth from the township, or from the Town of Prescott, and I guess that those two are fairly clear. There's no commitment there to providing us with any assistance for our arena operations unless we participated by signing the agreement for the third arena. So I think other than the goodwill of the, of the two municipalities, we're basically on our own to subsidize these operating costs for two thousand and nineteen at least.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll, we'll now move on to.
Unless somebody wishes to take issue with those.
I don't with those, just, if I may?
Go ahead.
So we, we do have an existing agreement in place with Augusta?
So there is fifteen, fifteen thousand that they provide annually?
Not individually to arenas, but.
Correct.
But as an overall.
As a sort of lump sum.
So the, the offer was, was an increase to, to that, but, but we still have that other agreement in place. We don't have one with Prescott.
That is correct.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
Oh, has there been any sort of back-channel discussions with either the CAOs?
Not, not on this particular topic.
Not on this issue? And the second part of the question is, has, has our treasurer now got together our firm revenue and expense statements for two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, I believe so.
For both arenas?
I believe so, yes.
Great.
No other questions?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, that rather than let the issue die, and depending on the will of the table here and the will of council, rather than let the issue just die, my feeling is that we should be sending a, a letter, at least, if not something a little bit stronger, but we should be sending a letter to both entities, both municipalities, just pointing out to them that here's what our arena operating costs were, here's what our revenues were. I think it should be noted that our revenues, according to the report that we had from Facilities Manager, in the latter part of the year, the revenues kind of declined. We did have some time that wasn't, that was available, it wasn't rented, if I, am I correct about that? There was some, there was quite a number of hours that were available that weren't actually taken up by either the figure skaters or the, or the minor hockey groups, am I correct?
Through the chair, yes. Well, I wouldn't say that wasn't taken up by the minor hockey. I would just say collectively, there was available ice times at both rings.
Right. Okay. Do we have any way of quantifying that?
I don't have the report here in front of me, but I believe our, the, the previous meeting that I had, my Facility Stats Report?
Yeah.
Indicated the hours that were available, that weren't rented from two nineteen to the previous year at the same time period.
So what I'm suggesting, Mr. Chairman, is I think I'd, I'd like to have the staff put together a, sort of a single-page, a single-page information letter, I guess you could call it that, and invite them to participate if they should feel inclined to do so. I mean, we did, we did host the two arenas, they were open, we didn't discriminate who was going to use them and who wasn't, so our taxpayers have borne the cost, and I think they should at least be aware of the fact that this is what the costs were, and this is what the revenue was, and this is what the shortfall was. So then the next step would be, after that letter is constructed, whether you want it sent out to those municipalities on a CIO-to-CIO basis, or whether you want it sent out on a political basis, mayor-to-mayor. So I'll leave those two kind of suggestions, or three kind of suggestions on the table here, and we look forward to some discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll start at this end with John. Would you like to see a CIO-to-CIO, a, or a mayor-to-mayor letter? Sorry about that.
Jump right in.
Yeah.
That'll teach you for getting extra space over there.
I, I'm not really sure which way, which would be the way to go, but I think more communications definitely would work a lot.
Counselor Hunter?
Well, if you're questioning, whether we, in my mind, whether we direct the letter to the mayor or whether we direct, direct the letter to all members of council? And we know for sure every member of council knows the position, and I think once we send the letter finding what our costs are, I suggest we give them maybe a month or two months to chew on the stats a little bit, but then after that, I think we need to maybe send another letter to the township and town aren't willing to support their residents using our arena, we may have to look at some other process of their rate payers contributing to the cost to operate an arena, whether it's a levy, sports levy, or individual levy, or, or something to cover the burden of the loss.
Anything else? Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, for me, it would be a letter to all, to mayor and all members of council for, for their consideration. As for what the request is, I'll leave that to the CIO and mayor to, to decide. You know, as pointed out earlier, I think we already have that agreement with, with Augusta that's in place, and from my recollection of Mr. Malanka, or Mayor Malanka, excuse me, speaking, was the, the resolution that, that we got in our council package was a bit of a surprise to me, because I think on several occasions, even in one of his mayor reports, he indicated that, that that dollar value would go through whether the agreement was done or not. So words in the paper I know are different than the resolution that was presented, however those words, you know, were, were actually said. I know Prescott was very clear that, that they were not going to, but, but I know that our, there was a, a different scenario for Augusta. So what was in the letter, I, I, I'll leave that to staff and to yourself, but a hundred percent think we should send something out.
I'd like to send, so.
You, Counselor?
Yeah, I'd need to send a letter, but I was at that resolution that day, and it was strictly brought out that if all three township are involved, a third, a third, a third, and it's in here too, a third, a third, a third. So, I mean, it's pretty blunt, and we can go along with it, so I can't really, to me, I can't even really see why they would even pay either one, either party. The Prescott one, that's the first time I saw this right here was on the package. I don't even know where that came from. So, and it says a third, a third, a third, too. It's pretty well spelt there. We could charge them or try to charge them, you know, an upbeat for the cost of operations, but you know, I think that could be, I don't know if it's fair or not, we can try.
Okay. And I will, and I will also go along with the idea it should come from mayor, from the mayor to the mayor and council, and leave it, leave the, the word spreading up to the mayor and the CIO. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to discussion item six B., which is the SLCEDC Financial Statements. They are pages ten to fourteen in your, in your package, and, Mr. Mayor, would you like to highlight some of these?
Okay. So these are pretty simple financial statements, the presentation is a little bit, well, once you understand the method of presentation, they're not too hard to read. I'm trying to think of where the best place to start is, but, and so maybe what I'll do is I'll just turn your attention at the beginning, right to the long sheet, the eleven-by-fourteen-inch sheet. And so the eleven-by-fourteen-inch sheet, you see the way it's laid out, at the top of the sheet, they're showing the, basically the revenues based on four dollars per, four dollars per head for each township. And you can see along the bottom there where it's been received, and so if you follow along with the line that says total receipts, you can see that under Edwardsburg Cardinal, we did cash flow our twenty-eight thousand, three seventy-two, Augusta cash flow twenty-nine, five sixty-six, Prescott sixteen, eight, eight-eight, and going on across, and you'll see that, Front of Young, for example, cash flowed four thousand, six thirty-four, but owes at the, as of December thirty-first, six thousand and eighty-four, for two thousand and nineteen. And then going on to Leeds and the Thousand Islands, they had cash flowed fifty-six, zero thirty-eight, but owed as of December thirty-first, eighteen, nine thirty. So those two amounts, I think now have been, they were receivables as at December the thirty-first, but they're good receivables, and I think they have since been collected. So that's the top of the sheet showing the revenue, and you'll see that there's no other revenues. Now, we get to the bottom three quarters of the sheet, which is the expenditures, and you can see the expenditures all itemized there, and they're, they're showing you the, the check amounts, and then each one of the check amounts is sort of broken down by, by, by function. So the first one is the commissioner's contract fee, then the consulting monies that were paid to Up and To the Right, the next column, and then the travel and accommodations line, and you can see how each one of those columns goes through to the next page and totals at the end of the next page. So winding it all down and not looking at the detail all, all across, the total expenditures were two forty-five, four ninety-eight, ninety-two, which meant that compared to the revenue above, which was two sixty, three ninety-eight, there was something like fourteen thousand, eight ninety-nine that was left over at the end of the two thousand and nineteen year. So if you just want to circle that fourteen, eight ninety-nine, and I'll refer you to the, just the number just below that, I just want to make sure that, that I can, I can relate these back properly. So twenty, fourteen, eight ninety-nine. Not having much luck here. Okay. I've got, I've got to have a little look at this. So the ledger balance at the beginning of the year was ten, four, eighteen, ninety-eight, and that left the balance coming forward at December the third, first is twenty-five, three eighteen, oh six. Now, those numbers should be selected on, should be reflected on the statement of operations, which is page eleven of ninety-two. Doesn't exactly line up. In any case, you can see how it's set up. I, I've, I've just lost the, my ability to reconcile it here mentally as I'm going, as I'm going through it. So I'll turn your attention then to page eleven of ninety-two, and on page eleven of ninety-two, they gave us the three-year spread. So I'll start with two thousand and nineteen, the year, the year-to-date actuals. So the revenues are the two forty-seven, seven sixty, which is, which is from the previous page, and then the expenditures were two eighteen for a net income of twenty-nine. And then they give us the two thousand and eighteen number, the revenues in two thousand and eighteen were two forty-nine, the expenditures were two twenty-seven, and at the end of two thousand and eighteen, there were twenty-two, six ninety-seven left over. And then they give us the same presentation for the year two thousand and seventeen. So that as of the first of January of two thousand and twenty, their calculations are that they have leftover from two thousand and nineteen, twenty-nine thousand, leftover from two thousand and eighteen, they have twenty-two thousand, and leftover from two thousand and seventeen, they have fifty-seven thousand. And then that feeds into the belt, the budget, which is the budget for two thousand and twenty, which I don't think I gave you. No, okay. So the budget was just approved at the, at the last meeting, and I, I thought I had given it to Rebecca, but I didn't. So anyway, that's the basis of the financial statements, and if there are questions there, at one time, these were clear in my head, but they're not so clear tonight. But I'll, I'll, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions after the meeting when I get a chance to think about how this was put together.
Could I just get a clarification on, on, on one item? There's several entries in the expenses up and to the right. Could you give me a brief, what is on the table?
Okay. So the, the commission has contracted with Up and To the Right for several different contracts. One contract is in the amount of thirty-five hundred a month for secretarial service, and the other contract was for what they called a social media campaign, a social media and an outreach campaign that was to be conducted on Twitter, Instagram, and a number of other social media platforms. So that kind of explains where those dollars were going. And then as well, on the, on the budget line there, there was something called, something called business development, business development commissioner's budget, which was seventy-two thousand dollars, and you can see that if you follow that column down, it was seventy-two thousand dollars, but it looked like only eighteen thousand spent, is that the way I'm reading that? Yeah, total expenses eighteen thousand, yeah, yeah. And then next column over than that was business development for the board's use, for board activities, and that was budgeted at forty-two thousand, and then the next column after that was business development for the commission to hold public events, announcement events, and that was thirteen thousand. I think out of the thirteen thousand, there was not much spent, not, no expenditure at all. So I don't know whether that answers your question or not. Or the board budget either, you're thinking of the forty-two grand. Uh, business, yeah, no, that's right, there wasn't. Yeah. So that accounts for the fact that there was quite a few dollars. So that accounts for the fact that there was quite a few dollars left over. There were some over expenditures on other lines, but under expenditures on those accounts, and the end result was for twenty, for twenty nineteen, the, 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 the under expenditure doesn't balance with the cash, and it shouldn't actually, because there's, there's cash flow that, that isn't reflected in the bank. And a lot of this has to do with the banking.
So it's our councillor Hunter?
I just questioned some of these expenses. And this Up and To The Right, some of these contracts are saying we're going after industrial development. What are we wasting money, money on, on social media? No industrial developer is going to be on social media looking to find where they're, you want to go, I think it's just a.
Well, that's been one of my arguments right from the beginning, but the, the, the total emphasis to find leads up to this point in time, the total emphasis to find leads has been to find an electronic. And, and you know, I think now that they've realized that there has to be a change of focus here. And I'm just talking to one or two of the members in the last week or so, and there's been some, some discussions with the commissioner, I'm not part of it, but there's been some discussions with the commissioner about how they have to change the focus. And I think it's going to shift away from this total emphasis on social media to more traditional ways of searching out potential prospects, if I can put it that way.
Carry on with, on the business developer commissioner budget. Is that expenses from the commissioner or on top of his wages?
Yes, well, first of all, it's on top of his wages, that's correct. And it does not include travel and accommodation, which is the fourth, the third column in, which is the seventy-two hundred dollar column. So it was for initiatives that he might undertake.
Seems like an awful hefty salary to me.
Well, the basic salary, you can see there from the, from the budget. I'm trying to think of where you, where the best place to point that out.
Looks like eleven-three.
Uh, where do you get that?
Well, looking on the front page.
Oh, yes, well, actually.
It does fluctuate a little bit, but eleven, eleven-three seems to be two or three times shown.
Uh, but if you look at the, at the, yeah, eleven-three is the monthly cash flow. Uh, because the commissioner is not an employee, the commissioner is a contractor. And so he has to collect HST from us, we have to collect, we have to get that HST back from the government. Uh, but if you look at the commissioner's contract fee, which is the first column on the, is the first column, you'll see at the top of the column that the contract is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Correct.
It's all pretty clear on page eleven.
Yeah, page eleven is the better presentation.
But I mean, it's, it's one thirty-eight plus seventy-two hundred for travel, plus another, plus another seventy-two thousand for.
Actually spent ten, ten nine forty-three for travel.
Uh, councillor Dillabod, did you want to get in here?
I just have, when you say, um, getting, actually getting back to that, page eleven ninety-two, we had fifty-seven thousand left over, two seventeen twenty-two at two, eighteen in nineteen twenty-nine, comes up to a hundred and nine two eleven. Now, was that put forward in two nineteen? Mr. Mayor, do you know?
Everything goes forward to twen, to January one, twenty twenty.
Okay, well, okay, so we've got a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and eleven, for argument's sake, say a hundred and ten thousand, plus our, plus the, from each township we're paying, right?
Yes, we start twenty twenty?
Yes, there is a hundred and nine, okay. I added that up, I don't, I wonder why I don't have that. Yeah, so that's a hundred and nine two ten going forward, is that right?
It's page ten.
Yeah? Okay, okay, good.
And it's not all cash, because some of the cash that's due to us is from the last column on the long sheet, which is the HST recoverable. And the treasurer has to apply to Revenue Canada to recover that HST. And it turns out that not all of it is totally recoverable, most of it is.
Uh, John, did you have any questions on this? Okay, councillor Hunter?
I just got to stand for a while, I take muscle spasms.
Okay, relax.
Yeah, just one, one final one, and, and it's great to have access and to actually see the financial statement. It certainly doesn't rein in the difficulties that I was having with, with it, but it's nice to have the info, the information in front of me. You know, I've pledged my support for the, the one more year, and that will continue regardless of this.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for that. And discussion item six C, which is COVID-19 in Township Operations. Mr. Mayor, are you speaking to the, to this?
Well, just briefly, because I wanted this brought up. So just to advise members of council on, on Friday, March the thirteenth, unlucky day, as you know. Uh, but on Friday, March the thirteenth, Mr. Grant can lead the meeting of the Emergency Management Coordinating Committee? Is that the correct name?
The Emergency Control Group, yeah.
Emergency Control Group, to just sort of review with me and with each other the, the steps that had been taken with regard to this COVID, COVID-nineteen. So just briefly from his report, that he had available on the table that night, the fire department had implemented additional precautions for medical assistance that will help reduce exposure. The township office, reminding the general public, new social media and website, of non-face-to-face options for paying tax bills, dog tags, fire permits, transfers, station cards, et cetera. We're obtaining more information and advice from the local health unit with respect to the increased risk of exposure. And as of Friday at five o'clock, all facilities were open to the general public as usual, and the plan was to add this item to Monday's agenda, which is what we're doing right now. And so there was a number of notes that I took as we were sitting in the meeting, and prior to the meeting, actually. Uh, facilities manager announced that Hockey Canada had issued directives that all teams and leagues under their jurisdiction were suspended, practices, games, and banquets, et cetera. And then the Ontario Women's Figure Skating Association?
Through the chair, Skate Canada.
Skate Canada. They had announced that all of their women's programs were being canceled, which in effect had the effect of canceling the figure skating concert that was scheduled for Friday night, Saturday night?
Saturday.
Saturday night. So basically, that left us without basically any business for Friday night or Saturday night. And those were the last two events that were scheduled for the Spenceville Arena, so Spenceville Arena, in fact, shut down early. So then we had a long discussion about what to do with the Ingredient Center, and I urged them to keep the Ingredient Center open over the weekend, and at least till today. Thinking, my thinking was that, you know, parents are going to be home, kids are going to be home. We had already advertised free public skating, let's let it continue and see what happens. And Mr. Spencer is here, he can give you a report as to what happened today with, maybe if you would, Mr. Spencer, just outline what happened today.
Uh, through the chair to Mr. Mayor. So the, the normal senior skate that takes place Monday to Friday at the Ingredient Center, I'm going to say today, there was, I think, eighteen to twenty, when normally that number is thirty to forty. So that dropped pretty much in half today.
Now, that's the early morning skate.
The early morning skate.
For the adults.
That is correct, yeah.
And that's again a free thing, yeah.
Yeah, and then we offered public skating the, this afternoon from two to three-thirty, and there were only three individuals that attended that.
So council decision, what you want to do here. Now, I guess the latest advice is they're trying to persuade us, no gatherings of more than, what, is it fifty now, or is it five now?
It's fifty.
Fifty now. The implications, of course, are this. If we, if we make the decision to, to close the Cardinal Arena early, we forego all that revenue that we would have had for, what do you call it, your spring program?
Through the chair to, to the mayor, yes, the spring program. But if I may, there, I've been on the phone quite a bit over the course of the weekend and today with some of our users for the spring ice, so I'll just explain. Spring ice is not anything to do with Hockey Canada. They're all private individuals that run spring hockey teams. Uh, so it's nothing under the umbrella of Hockey Canada, so they are permitted to run their own programs if, if they want. Uh, but I have had quite a few calls today inquiring about the possibility of canceling their, their, their ice times, because some of the parents in amongst some of the groups are not wanting to put their kids in, in the program now because of the potential of the COVID-19. So I don't have accurate numbers as of right now. Um, I, I do know that in the month of April and May, um, under Hockey Canada, there were four groups that had ice rented in April and May that will not be able to run their programs because they're still sanctioned under Hockey Canada, even in April and May, aside from the private individuals. So those groups will not be able to participate. The Cyclones had thirty hours booked for spring ice, but they're not able to. Morseburg Skate Club runs a skating program, and they have indicated that they have a desire to cancel their program. That was an eight, eight-week program, three days a week. Um, so there's a number of, um, organizations that are looking to potentially cancel. They haven't one hundred percent confirmed, but it's, it's not looking good, unless there's a change going forward.
Now, what is our, through the chair, what is our, what is our sort of, but, but let's go back a step. What was the first day that your spring ice rentals were to go into effect?
Through the chair to Mr. Mayor, so basically, our, our, the current contracts that, that run for a, a hockey season basically start in September, and they run through to the fifteenth of March.
Yeah, no, that's old.
That, that ended yesterday.
Yeah.
So from the sixteenth of March through to the thirty-first of May is when the spring ice would be.
Okay, so would you have a contract beginning on the sixteenth of March?
That's correct.
Oh, 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 so theoretically, they start it today.
If they have, yes, but there isn't anyone renting ice today, because it typically is March break.
Yeah.
There were some rentals scheduled for this week and next week, but they were through South Gumbel Minor Hockey, because their programs aren't done. Um, also have the Junior Sea Club that was in round two of the playoffs. Again, they've been mandated to cease their operations. Um, the Cyclones, the Brockville Braves had ice booked with us, and again, all those have been sanctioned to cease operations, so. Regardless if we continue spring-wise, those associations won't be able to utilize the ice that they had requested.
So your revenue stream is drying up and your participation is shrinking.
Councillor Dillabod?
What's your neighbors doing, Mike? Like both Gumbel?
Through the chair to councillor Dillabod, we are the only arena that is open in Leeds and Gumbel. All of them have ceased, the, the city of Brockville was the last to close all their recreational facilities. I say arenas, it's recreational facilities, it's, it's community halls, it's anywhere that rents the upstairs here, the town hall. We are the only township currently right now that is operating any type of rental agreement with anyone.
Right. Now, did we cancel our library thing?
Yes, yes.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
Yeah, through the chair, um, CAO or the CEO, Donna Gladstone, sent out an email later on, late this afternoon, indicating that because of the ripple effect of the neighboring municipalities closing their libraries, that they were going to follow suit, and I believe it takes effect tomorrow, I think.
And what about our camp that we had, we canceled that?
We canceled that because of low numbers.
Okay.
For this week. We didn't have enough.
Do we have to make a decision really of all of our buildings, like including South Gumbel?
That is correct.
Or Johnstown Hall, because we got a, a dole and.
No, they can't, um, I've arranged with them today. Um, they had a, a stag and dole was scheduled for March twenty-eighth, and we've been able to reschedule them, they're going to have it at the last week of April, providing things go better than what they are right now.
And they say it's going to get worse before it gets better. I mean, that's the information they're giving us.
Correct, yes.
So. Four to eight months.
Uh, I'm going down this way, Deputy Mayor? Any comments?
Not, not, not really, other than, I mean, certainly believe that the, the March break events, you know, should be closed. We should be following along with what, you know, federal and provincial authorities are doing, and as well as, as our neighbors, and, and as Steve mentioned, North Gumbel, and you mentioned all the areas are closing. I sent through to the CAO earlier today, the closure by South Dundas, and they're, they're, they've actually closed all municipal meetings and can, and canceled them until further notice. That includes the regular council and, and their committees of council as well, so, um, you know.
Councillor?
Well, I'm being directed to do stuff that I don't really agree with, but we haven't got any ice rentals, we don't want, like, keeping a building open if there's nobody to rent it, but Hockey Canada will be starting up again. And we generally start up in, when is it you start your fall ice?
Um, through the chair to councillor Hunter, um, normally with mid, or August sixth to the fifteenth, in that range.
Generally put ice back in first of August, but we put the ice back in.
But there will be, if I may, there will be some changes also this year with, um, now, things may change again because of what Hockey Canada has, has mandated, but, um, there is a new program Hockey Canada has implemented for novice and adam that takes, the novice took effect last year, the adam has taken effect this year, where novice and adam are not allowed to be on the ice until after Labor Day weekend now. Where before, the Rito Kings Association would have their conditioning camp the second week of August, and then their tryouts the last two weeks of August. None of that can take effect with those two lower age groups until after Labor Day weekend, effective immediately for Hockey Canada. That's across the branch, like Canada-wide.
Gives me a break.
I was just wondering if we were to shut Ingredient Center down this week? I know the Cyclones and a good number of other ones, funders and different ones, all, all have their, their tryouts for their fall team in the spring. And they, that's what Cyclones had ice time booked for, for their tryouts for their.
That is correct.
Their, their team. If we shut down a month and a half early, can we start up a, if this clears up, can we start up a month sooner? To give the teams that they can chance to rent ice a month earlier, and get their team have a month to do their tryouts then, rather than the month that they're going to use now?
Um, through the chair to councillor Hunter, um, my recommendation would be for the short term, would be potentially to follow the, the neighboring communities and just suspend the operations until the sixth, the fourth or fifth of Aug, of April. And then that'll give us a couple of weeks to determine exactly what's going to go on. I know Hockey Canada is meeting on a daily basis to determine what they're going to do with their spring tryouts that they've granted to a lot of the, the newer associations. that they've granted to a lot of the newer associations, as well as the junior clubs. So I wouldn't recommend potentially taking the ice out immediately. I would say let's just wait over the next two weeks and have the arenas closed until the sixth of April, like pretty much like everyone else is doing. And then by that time, come back and have a clearer indication as to what's going on. One of our other major users that has ice rented for April and May is a gentleman from Johnstown, Randy North. And Randy rents a large number of hours. And I've been in consultation with him a number of times over the weekend. And again, he's getting some feedback from some of his parents about potentially not wanting to play this spring now. So I need, I, I don't have, I haven't had enough time to, to get the actual numbers from everybody, but I don't think taking the ice out right away would be the, the ultimate choice. I think we should wait, close the facilities like potentially everyone else is doing and have another meeting within a week and a half to two weeks when I'm able to be able to have a lot more information available as to who potentially would want ice in April and in May.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the thing that bothering me about, and I appreciate the, the thought behind the recommendation that the facilities manager is making, but, I mean, I hate to be hard-nosed about this, but this is taxpayers' dollars here. We have no revenue stream. And keeping open for three weeks with no revenue stream on a what-if basis, we, we incur the expense of that. And we, we incur all of that expense without any hope of any counterbalancing revenue. It just seems to me that nothing is gonna get better by April the sixth. Hockey Canada is not gonna change its mind by April the sixth. Kids are gonna go back, maybe they're gonna go back to school, maybe they're not. But we're not gonna have any revenue after April the sixth anyway. So, I mean, I, it just seems to me if we're gonna bite the bullet on this, we should bite the bullet now. I hate to say it, but we have no choice, but we have a, a large number of folks that need to be, need to be laid off to save taxpayers' dollars. We know from the federal government that, you know, we know waiting time to collect on E.I. So, and that they'll be processing those claims immediately. But, I mean, we have to look at this from, from a business point of view and a taxpayer dollars point of view.
Mr. Mayor, what are you trying to lay on?
Well, well, why would you need your, your arena facilities people if you're not operating arenas? At least though. Spring programs haven't started.
Answer that. You know, yeah, through, through, through the, through the chair. You know, I, I would, I would say the staff recommendation right now is to look at that three-week period and, and, and to reassess. There's, there's a number of items in that two to three-week period that we could increase our cleaning frequency on, on some of the areas that, that are open to, to, to certainly stay ahead. There, there's a lot of maintenance that, that can be done in that period. We, we, we had wanted, if I'm not mistaken, unless something has changed with respect to the spring flooding, about preparing sandbags, there, there are a number of activities in that, in that window that, that can be accomplished. You know, with, with, with the, with those facilities down in, in, in that temporary. There'll at least be some, some time with respect to the Spencerville Arena with respect to taking the ice out and, and doing a lot of the maintenance that typically gets, gets done. So it could, it could potentially have more, more of the facility operators working on that and getting a little bit more maintenance done at a, at a quicker pace during this, during this time.
What about the canteen staff?
The, with the students?
Well, the canteen staff, I, I, I guess, I guess they're students, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Addressing the chair, the canteen staff would just not be, would not be scheduled to do any work.
Counselor Hunter?
I wouldn't suggest that we take the ice out right now. What I was suggesting is renewsion revenue here is a way to make it back up by being able, able to open earlier. We're already still gonna end up shutting it down for a period of time. Rather than being shut down for two months in there, is there a possibility negotiating with Cyclones and them to, for, do their tryouts and stuff that we open up three to four weeks earlier and they book that ice to get the tryouts. They're still gonna wanna have their tryouts some before the start of the season. They still gotta get tryout time in there someplace to be able to get their schedule. Their schedules are tight anyway. They gotta get them, they gotta pretty well start by Labor Day, the triple A, or they're not gonna get them in. So, so, and they, then they have a three-week conditioning period and because the tryouts have been done before. And I know most of the coaches have already looked, they've got players lined up that they're gonna be inviting to tryouts and, and stuff, and they're not, by luck of it, there's not gonna be a, a pro summer league going on. So they're not gonna have a chance to evaluate anybody, allow them to evaluate through the summer hockey.
That's correct.
Program. So I'm just wondering if there's a way of us making up some of this revenue by being able to open up early.
Through, through the chair to Counselor Hunter. I, I, I guess the only way to determine that is to find out when the mandate comes down from Hockey Canada, when those teams are permitted to do anything. Because as of right now, they're not even able to hold their team year-end banquets and what have you. So is it something that we could look at? Potentially, yes. But I don't have accurate numbers right now because I've just been trying to deal with the, the current state of the situation with, with the user groups right now that I've been doing for the last four days.
John, was there something you wanted to get in here on?
I guess for that three weeks or, or four weeks that we're kind of in limbo, what is the operating cost just to have the ice sitting there staying cold?
I don't have those figures available.
Counselor Dilabah, you wanted to?
Yeah, well, the opening up in July, I don't think is, for any revenue that you're trying to make up, you're gonna lose on that because of the weather. There's no way that, 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 you know, with the temperature being eighty degrees outside, there's no way. I mean, we see our hydro bills every month now, fifteen, sixteen thousand, it'd be twenty-two thousand, twenty thousand. I mean, I don't think that's the answer is opening up in July for sure. I think we just take it, take it on the chin. I, I think, I agree with, with Mike, keep it open till April third, see what's going on. Then maybe our next meeting, we pull the pin if it's still the way it is. But to open it up in July to make up revenue, we won't make up any revenue, our cost is more. I'll ask him, I just said.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just wanna, you know, recognize, you know, Mr. Ben Lewis here. You know, under my understanding, the national capital season is, is done and, and shut down. And, you know, being a business owner myself, I can understand that this is, you know, probably the biggest revenue source for your team. You're having a phenomenal year this year and, and this is the pack that stands, you know, make some money time of the year. And I'm glad that you're here, but there's no, no chance of that, you know, being open until the fall for you, correct? Like season back on?
There isn't some negotiations right now. They're, they're looking at different options, but obviously, as Mr. Spencer said, we're limited to what Hockey Canada says. We can't even have our year-end banquet, which is related to, you know, near the end of April is what we're looking at. But at this point, we can't do anything, we can't even have a team meeting.
Yeah, everything I've read, you know, says even no AGMs or, or anything like that at all, so. So by us staying open, I guess that's the question, by us staying open longer is not really ultimately going to help you or your organization in any way?
Not at this point, we're limited. I do have a spring team with some ice, rent, sorry, rented as well, but we're looking at that right now. Obviously, some of the tournaments that we're booked in already are, you know, they're still kinda staying open at this point. But again, it's, it's apparent, you know, yes or no at this point.
That's an issue that, that we have, that we talked about, but we haven't really come to resolve, which is the question of what do we do with these folks that have contracts for spring ice time? I, I mean, I, I think we should be fairly, not fairly lenient, totally lenient about this. I mean, I think if they wanna cancel their contracts, we have to let them out, out their contracts without penalty. I mean, this, this whole thing is beyond them. Most of them are, there may be a few of them that are sort of profit-driven, but they're not making enough profit to cover this. You know, so I think, I think we have to give the facilities manager a sort of a, an open hand to, to deal with the people that want out of contracts.
And I think by the nodding of your head, Mike, I think you've pretty much grasped that.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a decision to make here, whether we close the arena now or whether we wait three weeks?
Well, I think closing now, because I don't think anything's gonna get better.
Counselor Dilabah?
I'd like to hold on, take Mike's suggestion, hold on, there's enough work for the boys in there.
John, your ideas on that?
I say hold on.
Counselor Hunter?
I think we can do a sixty-eight, well, anyway, until the, that's when the schools are scheduled to go back. And the schools go back, maybe we have a chance, we have to go in to get them. Schools don't go back until sixty-eight, well, they say that's the closing date, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I think I would echo that in listening to the CAO and, and Mike, that there's lots of, lots of maintenance to be done, lots of things to do, gives them some, some extra catch-up time. And, you know, as long as that, that's gonna get done over the three weeks, then yeah, sure, three weeks.
Counselor Dilabah, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanna make that clear. Now, is this all our buildings, including Johnstown Hall, the whole nine yards, right? Not this arena?
That's correct.
Okay, I wanna make that clear. Well, hang on a second now, let's think about this for a minute. Why, why are we, why are we closing the upstairs here? What, is there a group that uses the upstairs on a weekly or bi-weekly basis?
So through, through the, through the chair, yeah, there are, I believe, two groups, Tuesday and Thursday, I believe, that, that are typically there. The, the idea is that closing recreational activity for any kind of group gathering, so. Would be, it would be the, the plan would be the, the upstairs at, at the town hall and, and the safe center and the, and the arena facilities.
We don't get any revenue anyway, do we?
No, we don't.
I know, but to me, to me, it's the idea that, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, I mean, I know it's not on the table yet. Maybe it won't be, and I hope that it doesn't. But I hope, and I think my breaking point is, my breaking point is, is general operations and governance. And I think it's an absolute tragedy to close down the Parliament of Canada. Sends the wrong message to everybody. And my breaking point is closing down municipal council, our council meetings and our committee meetings. We don't very often get crowds of two hundred in here, nor do we very often get crowds of fifty. So as long as I've got a staff that's prepared to come in and support council, I would like to see council activities continue. And there's no reason in my mind not to, except lack of staff. Counselors, individual counselors want to absent themselves from meetings, that's up to them. If there's no quorum, there's no quorum. But there's a big difference between a meeting not taking place because there's no quorum and us deciding ahead of time that we're shutting down everything. And I think it sends the wrong messages all the way around. So that's why, I mean, I'm speaking to try to keep at least the upstairs open. If, if those groups wanna come and use their upstairs, that's up to them, they're all out of it for trying to allow.
Okay.
Want the other side of that, Mr. Mayor? Sure. Well, we got volunteers, for instance, in Johnstown, and they sure don't wanna be in anywhere near that place if there's someone else that's giving them down with that. Okay, so, so we're not talking about the Johnstown recall? Okay, I just wanna make sure, well, we gotta do it, either we do all the buildings, one of them.
So through the chair, I, I, I think anything that, that's running and getting used, it's a consistent message that we're closing up tho, those particular items to, to, to reduce, well, to, to support that social distancing at, at this time, which is consistent message throughout.
Go ahead, somebody else.
Go ahead to the CAO. So at, at this time, the, the front door is still, if somebody wants to come in, they, they can come in?
That is, that is, that is correct.
So my, my suggestion would be to, to, as of today, I know the MPP's office has decided to have doors locked, closed, still accepting emails and phone calls and, and returning those sort of things. I know our MP's office today didn't want to, but, but they chose to do the same thing as well. I believe that Augusta, South Dundas and Prescott have all closed and locked their doors as well, only taking phone calls and emails and et cetera. And, you know, everything that we're reading is, is making that same suggestion. So for, for the first, I mean, the kids can't even go to school. So if it was up to me, I mean, I would make that suggestion that we follow that until at least the April fifth and sixth. I have no problem with coming to council meetings. It certainly isn't affecting anything that way, but putting staff at risk for somebody coming through the front door, that sort of thing, when, when somebody can easily access the information via the internet or a phone, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
I just have a question to, to the CAO, and that is, is there a liability issue connected with any of this? If we stay open and somebody gets sick, are we in a position to, so?
Through, through the chair, at, at this particular moment, I, I can't answer that.
Okay. I think perhaps we should look into that, just to, just, just to see. But I, I would concur with, with Counselor Dilabah and Deputy Mayor. I think we should, if the other buildings are shut down, I think we should shut it down myself.
So I just wanna give the counterpoint to that argument. And if I, you know, this is one of the things where it'd probably be outvoted, but I just wanna give the counterpoint to that argument. And, and the counterpoint is this, I don't compare the township of Edersberg Cardinal with the MP's office or with the MPP's office because those two bodies are under a, a lot more scrutiny and, than we are to start with. And they're in much larger environments. We are, we are, we're, we're just plain not comparable. And as I said at the beginning, I think the very fact that the Parliament of Canada shuts down is sending the totally wrong message into the society. It, it's telling the society that even their elected legislatures, elected members are, are, I'm, I'm gonna use the word, they're panicking here, this is a panic, and I'm not about to be panicked. I mean, it's time for some saner heads to prevail here. The whole concept behind this is try to reduce this curve, that's what they're trying to do. They're gonna, they're gonna save the healthcare system and kill the economy, that's what's gonna happen. Is people gonna die as a result of this, there's no question. Seems cruel, but we're not gonna stop it, it's gonna, it's gonna run its way through the society.
The chair needs some guidance here, do we need a vote here or?
I think you got consensus.
I, I do too, myself.
Yeah.
Staff, staff comfortable with what they heard?
I just, I just wanna be clear on that last item with respect to the municipal office. I just, I just want to be clear on that last item with respect to the municipal office.
What, what I said was lock the door, answer phones and emails.
Correct. I, I really, yeah, thank you through the chair. I, I just didn't, I just didn't really see a consensus on, on that particular item.
I don't know, actually, that, that particular item really didn't, didn't serve us.
So.
So, so you're asking, you're asking for guidance yourself here.
I, I, I.
How many people, my question would be, and I did put some thought into this this afternoon, how many people would actually come to our office throughout the day?
Through, through, through the chair, for today, I believe we had less than, less than 10 in the office.
Do you think there's, do you think there's a risk involved there that we have to lock the door?
Through, through, through the chair, the, the difficulty is that, yes, I, I would agree that we're a, a rural municipality and probably not the same likelihood as, as the city of Ottawa, but we certainly have residents within our township that has, that have traveled outside the country during this window. We don't know to, to, who they are or to, to what extent. So is, is there an elevated risk? I, I, I would say there, there is more risk. To, to what degree, I, I don't know, I'm not a.
Because as, as of yet, I believe, I heard the report correct today, that Leeds Grenville has yet to have a case, a positive reaction.
Press yet, press still hasn't.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not Leeds Grenville.
So through the, through the chair, that, that is my understanding as, as the information that I have at this particular moment.
Well, I, okay, I personally, I would, I would be in favor of, at least for a little while, monitor this carefully, but leave the door open. That would be, that would be my feeling. Counselor Dilva, we'll start with you.
I know, if we're going to do it, do it very cross-forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Office stays open, my mind.
Deputy Mayor.
If, if we're, yeah, I'm with Steve on that one. I mean, if we're closing recreational arenas where we've chosen to close libraries and, and protect the people in the library or offices, it's the exact same thing.
Counselor Hunter. Running a bit township here, but we're running a business too. I don't think we can start setting the preference that we want all businesses to start shutting down, so. We've got a counter there. I, I think it's prudent of our staff, if they don't know the person coming in, to stay back at the counter and talk to them, keep your two, two-meter distance between, between them. Question them when they come in. If they've been out of the country or something, ask them, say sorry, we can't deal with you, you have to leave. But I think we've got to, we've got to show them we're, we're, we're keeping the economy running here.
John, your comments?
I, I agree with John. Okay, looking for now.
Okay, I think you have your direction. Thank you. Okay, that's it for the COVID. Now we'll move on to action items, number seven, and we have the Port Town Night Run requested. And we do have a recommendation on this. However, the recommendation will have to be changed from May 2nd to September 22nd, 2020.
September 26th.
I'm sorry, the 26th, yes. Whatever I said, I have the 26th down here. Anyway, we have discussed some of the package at, at, at the earlier presentation. So what I'm going to, what I'm going to just ask council at the table here, if you have any questions for, for Mark, you've had a chance to read the briefing notes, so any questions? Before I call the question.
So, so through the chair, if I may, and it's not a question so much as through the chair, I just wanted to commend Michelle on the amount of work that he's done putting this program together. His briefing package here is very, very extensive. You can see that he's covered every base to get this running. And I know, Michelle, you must be disappointed with your change of date, but I wish you the best, and I'm sure your recommendation will find support here at the table. But I just wanted to congratulate you on your package. And Mike.
Okay, so the recommendation is going to be changed from May 2nd to September 26th, 2020. Do I have a mover for the recommendation? Counselor, Counselor Dilva, seconded by Deputy Mayor Desham.
I just wanted to call.
And, okay, if you want to make.
Uh, yeah, sure, absolutely. You know, my son, my son ran in, in the event last year for, for the first time, and, and it was super well-attended. I think it's unfortunate that, that the date's being changed. I'm excited for the 26th, that'll give me a little more time to get myself in shape, so that, so that hopefully I beat you by 30 seconds or so. But I, but I do want to say congratulations on a, on a growing event. And, and it's wonderful to have you, you know, going down Windmill Lane. Before, I did have some reservations about, about, you know, the crossing the port and the issues there, although the port GM has, has alleviated those concerns and, and you have with, with the information item that you gave us as well. And I'm, I'm looking forward to it, I think it's going to be a pretty awesome event.
I'd like to just ask Mike a question before we, before I call the question. It's for runners, and we've explained that. Now, the registration, there would be a registration cutoff for May the 2nd, and has that been also extended for the September 26th?
Right, so that will actually be extended. So the regular rate, at, at this point, I've been told by the trustees, we will get, actually continue the regular rate until September 27th, uh, 25th.
25th, okay. And now one of, just one other question. For those, for those people that can't run the 10K or the 15K, do you allow mobility scooters in the race?
Actually, we do, and that'll be for the 5K.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm going to call the, the, the question for the recommendation, as amended, all in favor? Kerry, you're on, you're on, you're on the, you're on the run.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
If you want to stay, you're, you're quite welcome to, but it's entirely up to you.
Unfortunately, a lot of things have changed at work also. Must go back home.
Okay, the next item is 7, 7B, and it is the Fuel, Fuel Management System P. And your package number is page 52. And I believe, Mr. Shaw, you're speaking to this or highlighting this?
Yes, thank you to the Chair. On February 18th, committee meeting, staff recommended the council consider purchasing two cube card lock, lock systems, utilizing funds from the township's modernization fund. After some discussion, committee directed staff to gather more information and contact neighborhood municipalities to see if, if they utilized card lock system or if they might be interested in, in looking into the system with us. Staff have been receiving feedback, I've contacted, including Brockville, reached out to five, five of our neighbors. A few are, have interest, and we're looking for some more feedback from some of our neighbors yet. Brockville was the only one that had a true card lock system. Basically, it's the Cadillac system, I think $230,000. Much larger system, more tanks and stuff, but I had spoken with Augusta, who was quite interested. They have a FOB system, which is very much at the other end, and are interested in possibly upgrading. So I'm going to continue to talk with them. Their FOB system is basically unlock, unlock, I, from my understanding, I haven't got the full picture yet, but basically unlocks their pumps or, or locks it without any, any data acquisition and so forth. So they were quite keen to, to follow up on that. So I'm still going to have some discussions with them moving forward.
So I take it then by your, by the last sentence on your, on your note, that you want, you want to bring it back at next month's meeting?
Yes, I'd still like to discuss more, and I said there's another township I'd like to reach out to and see if that probably do, North Grenville, I think, probably has a system, I'm not positive, but I haven't heard back from them yet, so I'd like to speak with them. South Dundas has, has sort of passive interest in, in the system as well, so.
Okay, so this is, there's no recommendation here, this is strictly an info item. So any questions for Mr. Shaw?
So, so through the chair, is there an understanding that there is a sense of urgency here? That council is looking for a way to get control of our fuels, Fuel Management System? Is, is there, is there an understanding that there is a sense of urgency?
So through, through, through the chair, we, we certainly understand that. And, and I believe last month, we, we brought that in, in an urgent manner, and, and were directed to do a more fulsome review and, and come back. Unfortunately, in certain circumstances, we, we can't control the rate at, that we received some of those responses. So we'll, we'll certainly look to have a, a more fulsome report and moving, moving forward at next month.
Deputy Mayor.
If I may, was there, in your discussions with any of the townships that already had systems in place, was there the ability to add us on as a satellite and offer it on a contract basis to us?
I hadn't approached that. I'm thinking, looking at Augusta, they have the lower end, which is very, very basic. It's like a lock and key all along, system which doesn't have a lot of data, and so forth. And Brockville's way at the other end with a very elaborate system. They also include their police and community services on their system. And it's, as I mentioned, it's the Cadillac of the system, which is probably much more than what we would be looking at. So they did allow some contacts they had made with an RFQ for some companies they had approached for the type of systems and basically to, to put, and they settle on a, a computer system. So, so I'd like to speak with the, the other townships and establish what your interest is, for sure. And as mentioned, Augusta was quite enthusiastic about it. And there was some passive interest from South Dundas. So I'd like to get a hold also of, of North Grenville and see if they do, I suspect they have that system. If they don't, then maybe they'd be interested in also. And then we could work together and, and try and find something that would work for everybody and look, see what everybody's needs are.
Yeah, makes sense.
Any other, any other questions for Mr. Shaw? Hearing none, we'll move on. And we're now at 7C, which is the 2019 Cardinal and Edersburg Industrial Park Water System Summary Reports. And there is a recommendation attached to this. And I believe Mr. Shaw is going to highlight some of the, some of the proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, this is the action item to, for the committee to, and council to receive, the 2019 Cardinal Edersburg Industrial Park Water System Summary Reports. The summary reports are more of a general overview of the systems, whereas the annual reports are focused on flows and sampling. Owners of municipalities drinking water systems require to ensure that no later than March 31st each year, water system summary reports prepared in accordance with Section 2 and 3, as scheduled 222 Ontario Regulation 17003 for the preceding calendar year. Basically, the Edersburg and Cardinal summary reports are before you tonight. There is a recommendation that committee recommends that council receive the 2019 water summary reports for the Cardinal and Edersburg Industrial Park Water Systems.
Move the, move the recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I have a mover. And Deputy Mayor to, to second. Any questions, concerns? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's been received. And we'll move on to 7D, which is the Prescott Water System Annual Report, and that's pages 70 to 82 in your package. And I have Mr. Shaw's name on this again.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A little bit slow here, but you'll just indulge me for a minute?
Sure.
Back to the, back to the Cardinal Water Plant Summary Report. I wonder if you could just spend a minute on page 62 and 63? Because this, the page 62 and page 63 kind of reviews the system complaints from residents. And I don't, I've seen, I've seen these reports every year for the last several years, but I don't ever remember the system complaints being quite so numerous. So through the chair, if I may, is there anything different about this Systems Complaints Report than previous years that, that I'm seeing this number of complaints this year? So through the chair, if I may?
Through the chair, I, I don't believe the, the types of complaints are any different. There may be, seem to be a few more complaints with concern with water leakage. I think the majority of them tend to be, or have been found to be on the homeowner's site. And basically, our policy is that anything from the curb stop to the residence is the homeowner's responsibility to repair that. Typically, the way we find that out is there's two ways. One way is if there's a visible leak somewhere, we shut the curb stop off, and if the stop, the leak stops, and it's obviously on, on the resident's side. The other thing is sometimes it's, it's more difficult to see a leak. You can actually listen to the key, and you'll hear the water running through the curb stop, and again, you shut it off, and if it stops, then typically that is considered on the resident's side.
So through the chair, a couple more questions, if I may. So I understa-, and I have no problem with the fact that if it's on the, the property side, then it's really none of our business, we've just helped them locate it. But is the format of this report, is it dictated? And the reason I'm asking that is that, is it possible to add one additional column to this report which would show us the resultant costs of each one of these complaints? Now, if it's a private homeowner, it's nothing to do with us. But if it's something that has to do with us, uh, I'm trying to think of one, I can't just find one right now. Outdoor faucets had frozen and burst, causing a leak. Well, again, that's the homeowner's problem. He has to fix it. But do we don't, what is the repercussion to us? A lot of extra water flowing, I guess.
Through the chair.
We don't have any way of knowing that.
Through the chair, if, in that case, it probably would, because the water has to flow through the meter, so that person's bill would increase and, and the charge would go out. The problem we have with, with some residents is when the meter actually freezes. And typically, this is homes that have been taken over by property management units. They shut the heat off of the house and the water meter breaks. So, and then that's the case, the water's flowing out and it's not being recorded on the meter, so that's basically lost water. Our office administrator for operations is very good to monitor that type of thing. She works with Rita St. Lawrence, and she can actually notice unusual flows in places and has actually caught these. And, and we, from there, we typically will go and try and find the owner or leave a letter, and/or leave a letter in the door and shut their water off.
Shut it off at the curb stop?
We do, yes, because sometimes it's evident, if we can't contract or, or contact them, pardon me, basically their basement's filled with water. And there have been incidents where, I know at one place, we opened the exterior door and the basement was full of water. This was a few years ago, but that's kind of the, is the worst case. In other cases, you'll see water running out the foundation through a window. Neighbors hear water running in the house because the lines have frozen and broken, and they call us. So we shut the water off, try to contact the owner, and if we can't contact them, then we leave them a letter indicating we have shut the water off and to please contact Environmental Services as soon as possible.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I want to, you mentioned there about the water meters freezing and breaking. Is the homeowner unresponsible to pay for that water meter?
They are, through the chairs.
What is a meter?
It's about $135, through the chair, if I may, about $135 for a meter now. That's a badger-type meter. There are different prices for different meters, but we try and stock up on, on the badger, it's about $135.
Any other, any other questions? I believe we have duly seconded this and.
Kerry did.
Kerry did, I, I, got it.
My apologies.
No problem. No problem. Okay, we're now on to seven D, which is the 2019 Prescott Combined Annual Summary Water Report. And once again, I have Mr. Shaw's name on this. And there is a recommendation with this, by the way. Mr. Shaw?
Through the chair, thank you. Um, this, uh, this action item is, uh, to receive the 2019 Prescott Water System Annual Summary Report. Basically, um, follows under the same regulations as, as our own reports, although Prescott, uh, they summarize both their annual summary reports together in one report. They combine them, basically, and it's before you tonight.
This is the awkward report?
Yes.
Questions? Hearing none, uh, recommendation, could I have a mover for the recommendation, please? Deputy Mayor moving, and Counselor Hunter seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried, thank you. That moves us now to seven E. There's a recommendation with this, and this is the 2020 Industrial Park Water Wastewater Budget. And, uh, as I said, there is a recommendation on this as well. Uh, you've had a chance to read your briefing note. And, Mr. Shaw, are there any highlights you'd like to point out here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, basically, this, this is just a follow-up on, uh, committee's, uh, request to have staff review, uh, the fee schedule for the Industrial Park Wastewater Budget. Um, the previous estimate, was it based on estimate and would come back with actuals? And, uh, we're back in line with what we had originally thought. Um, and I think the first one was based on, uh, on twenty-eight, uh, thousand cubic meter estimated, or sorry, a thirty-three, uh, thousand estimated, uh, flow, uh, being responsible for, for our township. And it turned back, it was around the twenty-eight thousand cubic meter as, as was, was trending at the time. Um, basically, we've come back and found that, uh, the only difference would be is that there'd be fifteen hundred and ninety-two dollars, uh, transfer from reserves to balance this budget.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, so, through the chair, um, and I didn't, uh, have an opportunity to go back to the budget that we had seen previously. Um, but I do recall the fact that we approved the forty cent increase. Um, I, I think the only thing that bothers me here is seeing the line fifty-two, forty-seven, ten, where the, uh, the comment is wastewater transfer from reserve, the fifteen ninety-two. So, the fifteen ninety-two is obviously plugged in there, uh, as a reserve amount that's required to make the revenues balance with the expenditures. And, uh, uh, I did have assurances from the CIO today that that transfer doesn't take place unless required. Uh, but I just think that it sends the wrong message to the folks that, on higher levels, that review this, because what we're basically doing in a time where we're responsible for building the reserves to replacement values, uh, we're actually showing a transfer from reserve, which would suggest to somebody supervising us or looking over our shoulder that we're not setting our rate high enough. And, uh, you know, that's a fair criticism of, of us for, for making a transfer from reserves. So, I, I'm not going to make an issue of it here tonight. We'll let this go through and then hope that, uh, we don't have to transfer that fifteen ninety-two, because either our revenues turn out higher or our expenses turn out lower. But, uh, I'm really hoping we can avoid that transfer from reserves. So, I think we should probably follow through on this recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd be prepared to move it.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't move that, thank you. Uh, and seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any other questions, concerns? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried, thank you. We're now at, uh, seven F. And this is an information item, there's no, uh, recommendation here. And this is the Industrial Park Water Budget Update. Uh, you've had a chance to read the, uh, the briefing note. Um, any questions?
None here.
Hearing none, thank you. And we will move on now to seven G. Oh, dear. Our, our, our favorite, the, uh, S R, J R, B R Municipal Drain Levy Assessment. Uh, there is a recommendation with this, uh, that committee recommends that council pass a bylaw, uh, with the updated levy assessments scheduled and direct staff to bill and refund properties according to the bylaw. Uh, there is, uh, there is, uh, a copy of that attached. Uh, could I have a, uh, could I have a mover for this recommendation, please? Or do you want to, uh, we can, we can go, we can do the questions first?
Just a question?
Yes.
Um, so I'm looking at the draft bylaw that we have in front of us. Being a bylaw to levy the, can we not put in there the revised assessment? Because that's what it is. We did levy it at one point, we've been ordered to revise it. Can we put the word revised in there? All right, that's the first question, and I see the staff is giving us a nodding of heads. Now to the recommendation. Committee recommends that council pass a bylaw with the updated, again, the word revised, levy assessment schedule? If we can have the word revised put into the recommendation again? And direct staff to bill and refund properties according to the bylaw? And with those two changes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be prepared to move the recommendation.
Uh, staff, that's, uh, no problem with those two changes?
Through, through the chair, it, it probably is a better reflection and duly noted.
Good, thank you. Could I have a seconder, please? I need a seconder.
Whoa. We have no choice, gentlemen. We have no choice, the drainage rep, the Drainage Tribunal has ordered us to do so.
I have, uh, one, uh, I'd be willing, seconder, one change, uh, in point nine, it says we're, uh, allowed to extend, uh, period for up to ten years for payment when assessed over five hundred dollars. Is there any chance we can, uh, could extend that ten-year period?
Is there anybody over five grand?
Yes.
Who's over five grand?
First one.
First one, the top of the list.
Yep. Has there been any discussion between, uh, staff and the party?
Uh, through, uh, uh, through, through the chair, there, there has not been. Uh, the, the reason that, uh, ten years was, uh, chosen was, uh, that, that seems to be the longest period that, uh, that council has, has provided for, for, for anybody to pay through, through past municipal drain, uh, levy assessments.
Has that been in the motion of the bylaw, or has that just been a decision?
Uh, typ- typically, it's been through bylaw.
Thank you.
I'd be prepared to second this, if we could raise up fifteen years.
I, uh.
Comments?
My, my comment would go to, uh, to John's original, uh, Counselor, sorry, Counselor Hunter's, uh, original, uh, comment of twenty years. And if it was twenty, then, then I would, I would support it as well.
I'm just being generous, I wasn't trying to go for all. But I'd go with twenty.
You will, John?
At ten years, you'd be looking at, uh, twenty-three hundred a year, approximately.
You can't really comment on individual persons, so.
No. But there also is one-third grant in there, too. Counselor Dilova?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I like it too, I'll agree, twenty years.
Staff?
Well, before the staff comes in, I, I won't support twenty years. Uh, if it goes to twenty years, I withdraw my, I, I withdraw my mover. And, and the reason is simple. I mean, we're, we're providing this money, we're borrowing this money, we're borrowing this money, and, and we're providing it to these people at no interest. That's worth something, even though interest rates are getting pretty low. They won't stay low for twenty years. They won't, I doubt if they'll stay low for ten years. But, uh, I think that this, this has to come to an end. And, uh, it's been a long time coming. We made a mistake. The Drainage Tribunal process went its full, went at its full length. And we were ordered, we were ordered by the tribunal to make these changes. Period, end of discussion. Last thing I want to see happening is the tribunal come back to us and say, "You won't do it, we'll take over from you, and we will do it, and you will implement it." And that can happen.
So, we are going to do it, though?
You're darn, darn right we're going to do it, because we have no choice.
Right. We're just not going to do it over ten years, we're going to do it over twenty years.
No, not, I don't think we are. I don't think we should. It's the amount we're talking about, it's on the schedule, thirty-five thousand dollars. Ten years, three thousand five hundred a year. No interest.
The net is over here.
What is the net? Net, twenty-three thousand, two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars a year. Two thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars a year that the man shouldn't have paid for. No, 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 no. No, that he was obligated to pay right from the beginning. It was his responsibility right from the beginning. Was the work was done at his request, at, you know? He, he originated this entire process. Cannot escape that back. And, his farm is the beneficiary of the work that was done as determined by, not only, as determined by not only the tribunal, but as verified by the drainage engineer subsequently. And the testimony, and that testimony during the hearing.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
If I may, uh, which, uh, uh, as pointed out already, we, we have no choice other than to, to set the bylaw of, of repaying it back in. Um, uh, having that, or trying to rehash that entire conversation again, really doesn't make sense. We're just trying to find a payment plan that works and doesn't penalize, uh, any individuals uh, because of that work that was done. The dispute over what, what the tribunal decided, to me, really doesn't, for me, as a, as a new counselor, it's been going on for eight years, I'd like to see it done as well. And, and I think for, for me, the, the twenty-year possibility is, is what, we definitely will, will get this done, so.
Where does the, excuse me, through the chair, where does the word penalize come into this? Nobody's being penalized here in anything. We're, we're obligated to collect.
Again, I, I.
For work that's been done on this man's property. You get work done on your property, do you expect the taxpayers to, to fund it for twenty years?
I, I think, uh, in, in your earlier discussion, you said that we made a mistake. We're, we're trying to rectify, uh, some of those mistakes that, that were done instead of compounding them further. And I, for me personally, I'd like to see, uh, us not compound that any further.
Well, well, the mistake that we made was putting these costs against the other people, where he was the sole beneficiary. The mistake that we made was a mistake in his favor. We, we, we allowed ourselves to be influenced by the argument that the repairs that were, the maintenance that we were doing to the drain would benefit the entire, the entire upstream of the drain. That was the mistake that we made, and it was to his benefit. Now we were corrected. No, that work that was done was entirely and solely to his benefit, he must pay. Now we're correcting the mistake. We're not penalizing him a thing. We're giving him ten years to pay something that he, that really was due when the work was done. That's when the payment was due. Ten years is lots of time to pay off twenty-three thousand dollars.
Looking for any, any other discussion?
Is there any way to have the, the twenty years and then to put the interest back in? Is that an option? Then you would have a choice? Are they?
Mr. CIO, did you have any, uh, input on this?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. When, when this, uh, I, I want to say this drain started back in two thousand and three.
Crushed.
Uh, and, and, yes, the, the, the major portion of this work, uh, ended up being upwards into about six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars. And I guess I'm saying that, um, in, in, in that original distribution, there, there, there were costs that were probably, uh, close to the same. And, uh, what, what happened was that it was over ten years with, um, um, principal and interest. So, a, as a payback. So, uh, I, I have not come across a, a municipal drain with respect to, to the levying assessments that have been over, um, ten years in that payback. So, I, I, I would be concerned if you're going over ten years that, um, uh, mov- mov- moving forward with additional drains, that we, we start extending out the, uh, the, the time period, uh, much, much longer than, than, uh, what should be.
Thank you. Well, hearing that, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the ten years, not, not any longer, myself. I have a mover at the ten years. Do I have a seconder at the ten years? I'll second it. I'm ready to get a vote on it. Okay, I have a seconder with Counselor Hunter. Moved by Mayor Seo, all in favor?
We got one, two, three.
One, two, three, and one, two, three.
Motion fails. Ask the engineer what happens when the motion fails?
Yeah, what happens?
Ask the trainings, ask the Drainage Tribunal. When council fails to follow the direction of the tribunal.
Okay, uh, so, motion, motion defeated?
Uh, excuse me, can, can, just, just before we go on here, Mr. Chairman?
Want to ask for a recorded vote? Is that what you, is that what you were going to do?
Yeah.
I thought so. Now that we've, uh, now that we've already done the vote, can we go back and record that?
At this point, we're clear, but yes, sure.
Okay, Counselor Dilova?
No.
That's a no. Mayor Seo?
I'm aye.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Counselor Hunter?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So, one, two, three yeses and three nays. Okay, we'll move on. We now come to number eight, which is Counselor Inquiries and Motives of Motion. Do we have it? Hearing none, we carry on. Number nine, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report to make?
Yes, I do. So, first of all, with regard to our natural gas project, just to refresh your memory, the, the project has the name County Road Two slash Spencerville, a natural gas extension project. You all saw the letter that I, uh, that I received from Enbridge. And you all saw the letter that I returned to S- Enbridge. So, uh, I followed up, I wanted to make sure that Enbridge had received our letter, which they have. And I can report that our project is a very high priority. And I can report that our project is a very high priority with Enbridge. And I'll just refresh your memory to the point that what is happening here is that the minister has asked the Ontario Energy Board to bring forward a number of projects that meet the criteria for subsidy under the $130 million program. So, Enbridge is reaching out to all of the projects that they had started working with, determining which ones of those projects are still viable projects, who still wants back in, who's still prepared to subsidize construction. We are on record, the township of Liversburg Cardinal is on record, as being prepared to forego any revenues that we would receive from the new build. And that means that we have a tangible financial support to the project. In order to move our project up a little bit higher when it comes to the, after Enbridge refers it to the Ontario Energy Board, Enbridge is prepared to do a market study of our expansion area. And they are prepared to do this market study almost immediately. But when I got word that the study would be starting in the next week or so, I cautioned them not to proceed just this quickly, and I'll tell you why. Because in the minds of the folks that are going to be receiving natural gas, they're still thinking that they're going to have to upfront $16,000 or $18,000 or $20,000 of the capital cost. And I warned the people from Enbridge that if they do their marketing study without properly explaining to people that that old regulatory regime is gone, it's no longer on the table, unless they condition and educate the potential hookups that they won't have to pay upfront, their marketing is going to fail. So, they're now in a position of reexamining how they're going to approach the potential new customers when they know that they've got to get that message out very clearly right upfront. So, they're working on that. They're to get back to me about when and if this marketing study will go ahead. But fortunately, we've got a lot of time, because the, I'm not sure of the deadline for Enbridge to nominate projects to the Ontario Energy Board, but Ontario Energy Board does not nominate projects to the Minister of Energy until August. So, we've got from now until August, until we know which projects have been submitted to the Minister of Energy. Now, obviously, what's going to happen here is that the Ontario Energy Board is going to submit to the minister all of the projects which meet their new criteria for construction. And there will probably be $500 million worth of projects submitted to a $130 million program. And it will be the minister who will have to sort that out after the deadline, after the August deadline. So, that's the process that's been set in motion. Next thing I want to talk about, just quick, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, how can we move up, though?
How can we move up?
Yeah. I know with this criteria, like you're saying, stop, hold on. I'm not sure we should stop and hold on, because, I'll tell you.
Stop and hold on a while.
To, for Enbridge to do this study. I mean, I think...
It's a marketing survey.
I realize that, but I don't think, I think the marketing survey should go ahead.
It will.
But you're saying you told them to stop because everybody is afraid they have to pay that amount. I don't think they are afraid. I think they're well aware of the changes. At least, most of the people I've talked to.
No, not as of two days ago. I had a lady stopping me on the street saying, "I want you to get us natural gas, but we're not paying that $16,000." I said, "No, no, 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 that's all gone. You have to understand that some..." "No, no, we have to pay $16,000." People are not following the issue. So, they have to...
My neighbor.
Okay, fine.
But the delay is only ten days or five days.
Yeah.
And it's only just a matter of how they approach people.
So, is that how we move up, though? The ladder, if they're happy? If Enbridge is happy with the survey of, say, we have 500 people and 480 want to go? We'll move up?
Oh, absolutely.
That's how...
That's one way.
Okay.
That's one way. There's another way to get our project to the very top of the list, if council wants to consider it. And I'll tell you what it is. And I'm gonna go back to the old days. In the old days, when we were doing sewer and water projects, and we were eligible for 90% grants, our municipal council passed bylaws that said that once that sewer and water goes by your house, you must hook up to it. And if, whether you hook up or not, you're gonna be assessed this many dollars per month. Now, once, it was, it was, once those bylaws are passed, that you got your grant to build your sewer and water lines. I don't know whether you remember those days or not, John, but...
Yeah, they were passed here, too.
They were passed here. Now, if this council had the political will to pass a bylaw that said that once that gas line goes by your property, you're mandated to hook up, that would move us right to the top of the list. But we're not the collection agency, so I don't know how we enforce it, so I don't know why I went there. But anyway, how to get our, how to get our project to the very top of the list at the ministerial level, there are other ways to do that. Next thing I want to talk about is a phone call that I had from Bell Canada, and just out of the blue, I wasn't expecting it. Bell Canada has asking me for a letter of support over the signature of the mayor. Why can't I find it, Rebecca? I know you gave it to me. Here it is. Right where you gave it to me. They've asked me for a letter of support because they want to apply to the CRTC Broadband Fund to install fiber to the home all throughout Spencerville. Now, that will give Spencerville the modern standard, fifty up, ten down. And the project is ready to go. They've got their application ready to go to the CRTC Broadband Fund. And he said, "Pat, if I had a letter of support from you, it would really help us." So, I have the letter here. I haven't signed it yet. Wanted to make sure council was aware of it, but there's nothing but good to come from it. So, I'm prepared to sign it and let it go forward with our support. They say that they'll have it rolled out by the end of the summer.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, yeah. And the cost, I mean, it'll come to this office. We're well within the distance. And he was gonna provide me with a map of the area to be serviced, but he says it's the entire village of Spencerville. I have not seen his map, but he said it's the entire village of Spencerville, and they will have... The rate is phenomenal. It's a very, very good rate.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
That's what you're doing right now, but we are.
Well, he didn't, yeah, he didn't mention that at all.
I'm surprised, because it's all Bell.
Yeah.
It's not East Link, it's not Coop to Coop, it's Bell.
Yeah.
And for every tower, it takes in 15 kilometers.
Yeah. But that's not the same as fiber to the house.
That's fiber.
Yes, I know, but fiber to the home is the fiber that comes directly from the switch over here on the street, right to the building. So, it's not a, it's not off a tower.
I still think you have to do a line, though, in. You still have to do a line in the Coop to Coop, and you get a high speed. You still have to tie into it.
That's what fiber to the home is. The line, the fiber optic line comes from the switch to the building. Not, doesn't, the signal doesn't go through any tower. What you're talking about down there on...
Number two.
Number two highway.
It's fiber, ain't it, though?
Yeah, but, but it's trunk fiber that's going up the towers, and then you have to get your signal off the tower. The fiber does not come to your home.
Okay.
The fiber, there's a trunk fiber line that goes along County Road number two, all the way from, I don't know how far east, right to Bassett to Prescott, but we're not tied into it. This, these trunk lines will now be tied into those towers, and you'll get a signal off the tower. It's the same program that they just rolled out in Merrickville. I went to Merrickville and made a little report about the thing and the process that they're rolling out in Merrickville. Okay, so, one last thing. The job site challenge, so, CAO and I today met on teleconference with Steve Pence from Novatech, reviewed what is probably gonna be the final draft of the job site challenge submission. He's putting a few last-minute changes on it. Hopes to have it to us by Friday afternoon, and it'll be circulated to you Friday afternoon, and then it'll be on the council table on Monday night with the adopting resolution. Now, as I indicated before, I'd like to have all members be involved here, and all members to sign the actual submission. And so, and you can, you can give us some direction as to how you want to do this. We can wait until after Monday night, and the motion passes, and then sign the original document? Or alternatively, you can provide the CAO with a specimen signature to be kept under his safekeeping. He'll send it to Pence, and it will be electronically added to the package that you get on Friday night. So, whichever way you want to go, that's the way we'll work. And I just need some indication of how, what your feeling is.
Which method would you prefer, Mr. Grant?
Through the chair, probably providing those signatures and having it electronically would be cleaner, however, it's really the comfort level of council, whether they want to physically sign that document and then we send that.
I'll start. I'm gonna pull the table, so councillor Dilva, which way?
Whatever. I want to just get it done, so, the easiest, the cleanest, let's do it.
Go down to John down here.
Just members of council.
Hold, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, this John.
The mayor's the fastest. Let's get it off.
Yeah, for me, I want to do whatever's fastest and easiest as well. However, I do love the social media promotion part of it, and pre-submission, I would like to have a couple of pictures of signing that and making sure those that are out there that are looking...
You'd like to sign it here?
See it being signed, yeah.
I'd like to sign it here, myself.
Okay, so, I think what we'll do is we'll wait till the motion passes on Monday night. We'll sign it here, and then it'll go to them on Tuesday. They will print the 25 or 30 copies. It'll all be original signatures on that page. It'll come back to us, 25 or 30 copies back to us by prior later, and we will still have it submitted by Wednesday or Thursday next week. That'll be good, because the deadline is March the 31st, so, that'll work.
Almost works.
Okay.
And there won't be a lot of difference in the next version to what you've seen over the weekend? And I don't know how many of you saw the actual print version. Did anybody print it off and see it?
I didn't print it off.
Very, very, very impressive.
It is.
And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That brings us now to item number 10, which is question period.
This gentleman's been very patient.
No questions.
No question. Now, we do have a closed session tonight. So, do we have, do we do the motion now?
Read it at 8:34. Myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Deshaun, the committee of the whole proceeding to close session at 8:34 PM in order to address matters for Canadian to proposed or pending acquisition or disposable of land by municipality or local board, specifically industrial land, and then the proposed session date February 18, 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, thank you.
Tune a break, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Deshaun, the proposed meeting is now adjourned, and the meeting of committee of the whole is now resumed at 9:37 PM.
Do? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in open session.
Deputy Mayor Deshaun has a motion for you.
I have the motion moved by myself, seconded by councillor John Hunter. The committee of the whole approves the minutes of closed session dated February 18, 2020.
Okay, so, reporting out, we discussed and we discussed the minutes of the February's... Oh, I'm sorry.
Called a question?
Did I call a question?
Sorry, that's my bad.
Yeah, okay. So, we reported, reporting out, we discussed the minutes of the closed session on February the 18th, 2020. And we discussed the other part of the closed session. I haven't got the wording. Sorry. Proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by municipality or local board. That was discussed at length. And...
And provided direction to stop.
Provided direction to stop. And do we need to have the time that we can have a closed session on that report?
No, it was already done when we prepared the motion.
I got the motion here in here.
Okay, and is that good enough now for the reporting, Ed?
If it's officious for committee, yes.
Oh. Do we have a resolution on that? Or not?
No. I can't predict what you're going to do, actually.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, finish her out.
So, we just, we're good.
I'm going, Chair.
Go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor CAO. The committee of the whole does now adjourn at 9:39.
Good, thank you, folks.
All in favor?
All in favor?